Basically, to encapsulate, we voted last week on the hundred-foot setback because of the confusion on mixed zones between resource protection and shoreland. And Dennis needed some definitive guidelines to work with, which I guess weren't in there. And if I'm not mistaken, we voted to, the planning board voted to accept, I'm looking for it, to make uniform 100-foot setback from the annual high tide mark. Well, there were some issues with that, that Dennis may take two minutes to elaborate on, and then we'll maybe tackle it at the next meeting. Go ahead, Dennis.
Yeah, hold on just a second. I'm bringing that up now, but that hundred, you warned about this too. The 100-foot setback, that's not going to work. But I did do some research, and the, what those split districts are, or what they're saying is that they're, within another district, let's just say it's limited residential, it would show a yellow band or an orange band. Then you got the green band going along the water source, but we didn't know how far that green band went in. That makes it a higher protected area. So inland, waterfowl habitat, feeding habitat, that sort of thing. Some have a 75-foot setback, some, actually, they're called buffers, as far as, this is all under inland fish and wildlife. They're actually called buffers, I think. 75-foot, some are 100, and some are 250, which would be the most, it's probably not close. But they're buffers, from what I understand. It's not a setback, it's a buffer. And within that buffer, it...
Hold on a second, stop a second, Dennis. Ben, we're getting background noise while you're in the car. Can you just unmute your microphone for a minute? Yeah, okay. Go ahead, Dennis.
So basically, they're, it's, what these are, they're buffer. That split district, that green band within another colored district, is saying there's something there. It's probably regulated by fish and wildlife, it could be something else, but depending on what it is, it could have a 75-foot buffer zone, a 100-foot buffer zone, and a 250-foot buffer zone. Those are not setbacks, they're buffer zones. And whatever, so if anything is going to take place in there, it has to be regulated by DEP or Fisheries and Wildlife. So what I did was rewrite it to say that, and it's going to take me a minute to bring it up here.
Dennis, I'm gonna, because of our timing, I'm gonna put this on the back burner and have it as an agenda item.
Yeah, and then I'll have it ready to read to you.
Sounds good. Okay, so, we voted at the last meeting to start tackling the, using the Owl's Head ordinance as our background ordinance, as a background document, to start to draft our own ordinance, the title of which is yet to be named. I have, I have the original in front of me, and I have the one that I put some comments on. I don't know if any of you took the opportunity to look at the ones that I put comments, I didn't have a lot of them. There, it's, I thought the document, myself, I thought it was pretty good, and I was asking Dennis ahead of time a little bit, you know, the Swan's Island document is literally one page, and it basically says, this is the Swan's Island Tower Ordinance, any tower, and it defines the towers, anything over 50 feet, it says, you can't put it in the shoreland zone, and it can't be taller than 100 feet, and it has a quarter-mile setback. And then, it doesn't really go into procedural stuff, it doesn't do a lot of the things that most of our ordinance, our shoreline ordinance certainly does. So when I looked at the tower ordinance from Owl's Head, they go into a lot of depth on all the nuance. So, we decided at the last meeting to use Owl's Head, and I'm wondering if any of you felt you changed your mind, you liked the document, now that you've analyzed it, did it seem problematic to you? I mean, clearly, the section about the antenna district needs to go, because we don't have an antenna district. But I'm asking for feedback from the three of you, and Dennis, if you have a comment, after reviewing it heavily, what you thought. So why don't we start with Philippe?
I think that detail is good, because it puts in writing that there's always something to refer to if a conflict comes up, you know, like the, how the structure should be camouflaged, you know, what it should look like, all these details. Whenever we come up with a proposed plan, it's always nice to have as much detail as possible, like, you know, for the road going down at the Cranberry Shore, the fact that they had a site plan with Corps of Engineers and all that stuff, gave us information to look at. If there's no information, then an outside company with a proposal can basically say, well, you know, you don't have any, any structure for us to look at. So I think that more complex is better than not. The Owl's Head document is, you know, pretty complex, and we might be able to simplify it a bit.
Okay, well, so, again, that's our plan, but I just wanted a quick opinion here after looking at it in depth. Bill, go ahead. We can't hear you, Bill. Microphone's off.
I think it covers our needs pretty well. I wonder if we could legally retitle it Telecommunication Tower Ordinance, to be more specific. And I agree with you that we should remove the antenna section. But I don't see, and I'm guilty of not having fine-toothed combed it board, but I think it pretty much covers our needs at this time.
All right. And Becca, you're new to the long, long discussion that we had last time, but maybe with fresh eyes, did you get a chance to look that over?
I did read it over this morning, and I agree that there, there's a lot of detail, but I think it's helpful detail to be able to point to. I mean, it does seem, I guess that would be my question, it does seem redundant to say, like, oh, it has to go to the CEO, but maybe that's... I think the procedural information is helpful in all those details. It seems like a lot, but I think it's also helpful, because it's very clear for someone coming in.
Good, good. Okay, so let's start doing this. I don't know if all three of you have the Owl's Head document in front of you. I did send out the three, for me, and these were, the issues I had was, and of course, I don't have that email in front of me, the titling, I think is important, and Bill, you just brought it up, you talked about telecommunication, telecommunication tower ordinance, retitling it, and I was actually leaning a little bit on my concerns in the opposite direction, because when this issue first cropped up, Bill, you were the one that says, doesn't our height, doesn't our height restriction take care of the problem? And Dennis said, no, we don't have inland zoning, so to paraphrase, I think that's what you said, Dennis. So it doesn't take care of it. And so if we call it telecommunication tower ordinance and restrict it to telecommunication tower, we don't tackle any other issues that may crop up for any other types of structure of great height.
Okay, I think...
That this couldn't cover.
That's a good point. We would want to control, if not discourage, tall wind tower, wind power of towers as We certainly want to have an input on those, so I'm not sure. Perhaps my idea is not a good one, it should just be, just simply say, tower ordinance.
It's interesting that Owl's Head calls the cover page Tower Ordinance, but when you go to Section 1 Title, it says, this ordinance shall be known and cited as the wireless telecommunications facilities. Sorry, I was looking at mine. So they actually give it two names, and I don't know if they abbreviated, or just, they, I mean, throughout the document, they seem to be referring only to cell towers. And I actually wondered if we should expand by using the more generic term of tower, which Swan's Island did, and then goes on to define tower, which the Owl's Head ordinance, in spite of the fact that it's called Tower Ordinance, in the definition section, there's no definition of tower. And I think that's a problem. So Philippe?
I'm going to play a little bit of devil's advocate here. I think that we should not expand the definition to any structure or even define tower, because what we're trying to do right now is limit cell towers, which I think should be telecommunication towers, to be a little bit more expansive, and in particular, to be commercial entities. Because I don't think that we should be trying to limit private property and what a person can or can't do on said private property without having a better scope of what that is, which we don't right now. You know, looking down the road in the future, I just don't think it's a good idea to be too expansive. I think we should try and be specific about what we're doing right now, which is commercial telecommunications towers, which also apparently is, in this Owl's Head definition, covers ham radios. And the one thing it doesn't really talk about, which we've already seen, is the expansion of wireless communication through internet, like the broadband receivers. You had mentioned something about limiting these entities in shoreline zones, which would currently mean that Islesford and Suttons would not be getting internet, because they have receiving towers in the shoreline zone, even though they're not on, well, okay, the boatyard one's on a tower. But, do you see what I'm saying?
Yes, I take exception to one thing. Under Section 4, the Owl's Head, they do, I do think they exempt ham radios.
Was that an exemption? I thought it was an inclusion.
It said, this local land ordinance applies to all construction and expansion of wireless telecommunications facility, except as provided in Section 4.1. Except as provided. And under exemptions, the following are exempt: emergency wireless telecommunications facility, which are temporary, amateur ham radio stations of less than 60 feet are exempt. So...
That was my mistake. I thought, I reversed those. Yeah, so you could see, like, if we have, we have to have either exemptions, or to limit the definition to not include other things. Like, we're trying to go for something very specific, and in my mind, that is outside commercial entities wanting to pay somebody for use of their land to put up a tower that doesn't benefit the island. We all have cell reception, so we're not one of the islands that needed a cell tower in order to provide coverage.
What if, here...
We don't know what's going to, you know, we don't know what sort of technological changes are on the way, but I don't see why we would want to limit somebody from having a weather station or something else like that, or a, you know, a tall VHF receiver, as long as it's under the height restriction to need lights, or something like that. We're going for commercial interests.
What, I'm going to play devil's advocate to you. Okay, commercial, that may be something important. What about if someone wanted to put a wind farm on, in an open field, because they were approached by a utility company? I don't know if such a thing would ever happen, but do we care?
It's already happened. But you can see the difference is, does, do we want to limit a commercial entity from putting up a wind farm, or do we want to prevent Richard Beal from having a private power source as a wind turbine? To me, those are two very different things.
I agree with you, but I think we, in our last meeting, we talked about how tall Richard Beal's structure was. So, wasn't it 50 feet? Didn't someone say 50 feet?
It's somewhere around there. I think it's a little taller than that, but, but we're, okay, so we're in the ballpark of what we're trying to define.
Right. Well, I mean, are we talking, we're now discussing, do we want to restrict it to commercial telecommunications, or do we want to take that tower definition and say, you know, anything that goes over a certain height is going to affect everyone, not just property?
Here's the thing, is that all those expansive definitions in the Owl's Head document, if we put that over anything tall, then somebody putting up a wind turbine for home power would have to go through all of those restrictions and meet them. And to us, maybe that wouldn't necessarily, you know, that wouldn't be necessary in certain situations, but if we put it in writing, then it's an obligation.
In the Swan's Island Tower definition, it says, a tower is any structure in excess of 50 feet above natural ground level. So, but if we were to put a tower definition like that in the document, that would say, anything under 50 feet is not by definition a tower, and therefore, somebody like Richard Beal's wind turbine would not apply, would not be subjected to this sort of level of scrutiny, because it would not apply.
And neither would high-output, you know, wireless receivers and outputters, like the internet system that is connecting Islesford to Cranberry and Suttons.
Because they're below 50 feet.
Right, which I think that they should be, because we don't really know much about that technology, but it all went into place because we wanted the internet, but we didn't really have a structure around what it meant, or what, you know, the safety concerns were, or anything like that. And we could see more of that in the future, we don't know. Obviously, the internet is here to stay, so what sort of direct communication systems might we see? We should have some sort of idea, yeah, what the, we should have some sort of definition that includes that. To me, that means commercial.
Becca or Bill, do you have any thoughts? Bill?
I don't, you know, I agree with Philippe that we don't want to, we don't want to restrict landowners and residents' ability to erect a wind turbine. But I don't think that it's, I don't think it's a bad idea to have everybody have to go through some hoops to let the town know what's happening, and have restrictions and conditions for safety and visual impact. I don't think, I don't think that's out of line. Perhaps we should look, before we put a height limit on it, perhaps we should look into what the height would be of a personal wind installation. So we think that Richards is about 50 feet, but we don't know. So maybe we should try to find out how tall a, you know, a one or two-family wind generator would have to be. Would it have to be 75 feet? Or 100 feet is pretty tall. Isn't the tower on Islesford 100 feet?
Yes.
Yeah, it is. So that would, you know, I don't know that we cited that tower according to the restrictions that we're going to apply to this tower, but that would certainly have to have been part of it. So why don't we...
The thing is, you say it was 100 feet for the island tower, but the tower is put in the bottom of our gravel pit. So, so, that may be well, way less as far as it's protruding above ground level, if it's 20 feet down. In other words, it may be...
I understand that. I remember the discussion around it, and that was one of the reasons that it was, seemed okay to go ahead. But I don't think it's a, I don't think it would be out of line for us to apply conditions and restrictions to future installations. You know, 100 feet may be fine somewhere, it may be a real eyesore and a danger to its, you know, fall over field, other places. So I believe that we can write the rules, that we can have a hearing, and if the, you know, if the applicant demonstrates that it's a safe, safe project, we go ahead and approve it.
Okay, so just so we're clear, even before we really turn to Page 1, we're discussing whether this is a telecommunications ordinance, one, a commercial telecommunications ordinance, two, or a generic tower ordinance that may tackle not just telecommunications, but any structure over a certain height. Those are, am I getting that clear, that we have three things on the table that we're generically discussing here, before we've even opened Page 1 of this? Is that right?
Yeah.
I'm afraid that's right.
Dennis?
Goes back, we need to have a mission statement before we tackle the ordinance that knows, so we know what we're trying to accomplish. What kind of towers, commercial and non-commercial, residential, commercial, when you know what it is you want, what your objectives are, and you can start working on the ordinance.
So, based on what you just said...
Mission statement first.
We need to come up with a mission statement, and should that...
It goes a lot easier.
Yeah, and I had sort of quickly mentioned a mission statement last night, but in my mind, this whole process came up because we are trying to, right now, we are trying to limit a cell tower company from putting up a tower on the island. We don't want that. And so it seems like our mission statement resolves, revolves around that particular issue, and we just came up with a bunch of reasons to complicate it, because we're now wondering if it's going to be this, that, or the other thing. So, yeah, we should decide how much of this issue we're going to tackle.
I agree with you.
It also seems like, like, couldn't we add to an ordinance later on if we felt that it was necessary to include other towers? Like, we're kind of on a time crunch. We want to get this done so that we don't have a cell tower, right?
Yeah. Okay, so, I, my personal opinion is, we could leave out other, other structures at this point, and stay on task, and make it about telecommunications towers. I'm trying to find if there was, there's no mission statement in the Owl's Head one. Oh, it says the purpose. The purpose of this ordinance is to provide a process and a set of standards for the construction of wireless telecommunications facilities in order to, and then, there is a lengthy list, which I thought actually was good, but I thought this part of it could be removed. This is on Page 1, under purpose. Now, purpose is close to mission statement, if I'm not mistaken. Why are we doing this? What's our goal? So, do we want to start with their framework of their mission statement and adapt it? So, let's take a look at Page 1, and perp under purpose. Does everyone have that?
Yes.
Does everyone agree with that process?
I do.
Of starting there? Okay, so, under Section 3, and then we can go backwards and talk about our title, which is Section 1, and then we can look at Section 2, but it seems to me like Dennis and Philippe are both right, and that we need to figure out what we're addressing before we go ahead and tackle the whole document as a whole. And from a structure, from a meeting structure standpoint, I now have 10:34, we have half an hour left, I'd like to get a mission statement nailed down, then I'd like to have another meeting in two weeks, where we really, once we have the mission statement, we really come up with a draft that we could take to the selectmen for their July, beginning of July meeting. And that may mean, I don't know, Ben, I'm going to ask you to unmute, can we have one more meeting before the selectmen's meeting, or two? Are you there, Ben? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm here. Yeah, we could have one more meeting. The selectman will be July, I believe it's the 7th. So we could fit in another meeting, certainly.
Okay, and so, I really, and, you know, guys, feel free to chime in, but our moratorium, we may get some wiggle room because of the pandemic, but we have to get something before the voters. And actually, don't we have an election in July? Is that right, Ben?
July 14th, July 14th, yes.
Would it be, I'm getting bogged down. So, what I'd like to do is have something to present to the selectmen very soon, because our moratorium will have run out. So, let's move on. Do we like that first sentence? The purpose of this ordinance is to provide a process and a set of standards for the construction of wireless telecommunications facilities in order to...
Yes, I like it.
I'm good with that.
Me as well.
Okay. Becca?
Yes.
All right, Section 1, implement a municipal policy concerning the provision of wireless telecommunications services and the siting of their facilities. I'm good with that.
I am too.
Yeah.
Yep.
Establish clear guidelines, standards, and timeframes for the exercise of municipal authority to regulate wireless communications facilities. I'm good with that.
Okay with me.
Yeah.
Um, the next one is one I didn't like. Allow competition in, well, we'll discuss this, I know why this is here, maybe we do want it. Allow competition in telecommunications service. Well, that comes from, from most of the research I was looking at, a lot of companies will co-locate on a single pole. In other words, one, if one company puts a tower up, another company could come in and say, can we get on that tower, rather than constructing a whole separate tower? Now, I think that our mission, or our goal, may be to discourage any towers, and so having that sentence there is confusing, because it's saying, we're allowing competition, but by the same time, we don't want to promote the tower to begin with. So I wasn't sure we wanted that there. Any thoughts?
I think we should have it there, or something very like it, Joanne, because if we are stuck with a tower, and it's really hard to prevent it, we can, all we can do is make the best use of it possible, which would be require co-location rather than multiple towers.
Which is actually in this document, that you, one of the standards you have to go by is, can you co-locate? And if you can't, you need to prove why you can't. And that's later on in the document.
Yeah, I saw that, but I believe that this sentence kind of leads to that. I don't think it takes away our ability to continue and enforce that restriction.
Okay.
I think we leave it in, but I don't know, I could be outvoted easily. It's okay with me.
Any other thoughts?
I'm trying to figure out why it's in the document. I'm not sure if it has something to do with the fact that we can't actually stop towers from going in, like, we can't restrict telecommunications towers.
I think...
In this case, it might just allow us to get the best option, several, but I'm not really sure what it really means.
Dennis, if I'm not mistaken, we can't flat-out say, no cell towers, end of story, can we?
I don't see why we can't. This morning, I looked up for some, the main statutes, anything regarding towers, and there's very little. Alls I found was one poorly written, a very short, poorly written statute that can't exempt, I think it says it can't exempt amateur radio, and that's had something to do with what was said earlier. But I don't, I can't find any statutes in the state about towers. It's just going to take more research, but I don't see why, under hometown rule, we can't just say, no, you can't have any towers here. But once again, you know, it's got to go back to the comprehensive plan. Everything starts at the comprehensive plan. Ours is 10 years old. That's where, that's where it needs, all this stuff needs to start, just got to get on whoever... Just gotta get on, whoever, if there still is a comprehensive plan committee, we've got to have a current comprehensive plan. Um, that's gonna address it. But then back to this, I don't know of anything that would exempt, exempt us from saying we can, you just can't have a tower. I don't think we'd wanna do that.
That, one of our earlier emails, uh, that I think it might be an FAA or, um, regulation.
That's right. There was an article I put in one of the emails that I read that says you can't, for telecommunications, which are considered essential services, you can't just flat out say, sorry, no towers.
You can't.
I think I read that, yeah.
So I would, I propose we continue with this mission statement, maybe put brackets around this one sentence, um, because we haven't really decided. But just keep chugging along, otherwise we'll never get through it.
Okay. Um, encourage the provision of advanced telecommunications services to the largest number of businesses, institution, and residences, residents of Town of Cranberry Isles. I don't know if this promotes bring it on, or if this just says, if you put it there, get to everybody.
I think that's what it does.
Yeah.
Okay, so we like that.
Yep, yep.
Um, and it may, that sentence may give us a backdoor because if a project doesn't encourage everybody's, it receive, it going to everybody, that may be a reason why it's not a suitable project because it only serves a small quantity of the population.
That's correct. I think that's right.
Yeah, the only reason we're gonna get a cell tower is to move it back to Seal Harbor. We don't need one out here, so.
Right.
Be a backdoor for us to say, if we don't get cell reception on the back shore, you can't have a tower, so.
Yep.
Okay, next sentence. Permit and manage reasonable access to the public rights of way of the Town of Cranberry Isles for telecommunications purposes on a competitively neutral basis. I.
Yeah, I think that has to be in there.
Public rights of way, all right. Ensure that all telecommunications carriers providing facilities or services within the Town of Cranberry Isles comply with the ordinances of Town of Cranberry Isles. That seems like a obvious go. Ensure that the Town of Cranberry Isles can fair, can continue to fairly and responsibly protect the public health, safety, and welfare. I think that's a given.
Yeah.
Yes?
Yes.
Yeah.
Encourage the co-location of wireless telecommunications facility, thus helping to minimize adverse visual impacts on the community. Yes?
Uh, yeah, are we allowed to say require? Co-location? I don't know if we can or not.
Yeah, I, I agree. That's, that's, be a, a very big deal for us.
Yeah, so let, let's write in, um, um, required, find out if that's legal. Okay?
Yeah.
I mean, I think in the, later on, the document says something about they have to prove if there's a reason they can't lo- look, um, co-locate.
So, it could be that, since this is a mission statement, this is talking about the reasons, not what we're actually doing in the document, in the application. So, uh, Becca's right, later on, it does say you must co-locate unless you can prove that it's not possible to co-locate. So, and, and let's move on.
Yeah.
Enable the Town of Cranberry Isles to discharge its public trust consistent with rapidly evolving federal and state regulatory policies, industry, competition, and technological development. Uh, I'm okay with that. Um. Your thoughts?
Yeah. I think that's a good one myself, no?
Yeah.
Further the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan while promoting orderly development of the town with minimal impacts on existing uses. This is where Dennis is referring to the comprehensive plan. And I answered my own question I sent to you guys in an email about designated view sites and all that, and I'll get into that in a minute, but I think it's a player in this. So, we like that sentence. And finally, the most important sentence in the whole document, protect the scenic and visual character of the community.
Yeah.
So, that is an absolute given. And so where I will go with that is I did look at the comprehensive plan this morning because in this document, it talks about designated views and scenic views designated and protecting them.
Mm-hmm.
And in our comprehensive plan, there are three historic sites recognized federally in the Town of Cranberry Isles. The Yarsford Museum, the Baker Island Light, and the Bear Island Light. Recognized by the state are, and this is interesting, thirty-two shipwrecks and twelve known prehistoric sites that are all Native American shell midden's of lit, of which three are his- historically significant. But it also says in our com- comprehensive plan, the town has no specific ordinance measures or protection programs in place. So, we, it identifies them, but it says we're not, we're not doing anything about it. And under threats to historic and prehistoric sites, in the comprehensive plan, it says the major threat, and this is really interesting, is that a site might be inadvertently damaged through land development process, since the planning board may not be aware the site exists.
Are the sites located on this, it's through this document, Joanne?
I, in map four on the comprehensive plan, it has a colored area, and they don't wanna be specific because they're worried about vandalism to the site. So they marked these general areas and, um, it's, you can go and see it on the comprehensive plan, it's a hundred and fifty pages.
Yeah.
It is not, it is, does have a table of contents. I guess my point, coming back to what we're talking about, is in this document, it talks about preserving scenic view, designated scenic views. We don't have any. We have no designated scenic views. Does that mean we can't protect? Does that mean we can't write a document that, that the goal? The whole goal of this document, in my mind, is to protect, uh, protect the scenic and visual character of the community, which is the last sentence in that mission statement.
That comes up in our shoreline zone.
Yes, it does.
Um, in this.
But you know, but I, I think the, um, what, what you found in our comprehensive plan about the state and federally recognized sites could be very helpful in, um, uh, any permit applications, you know, if I write a white cross, one of those things, or if it was, a tower would be in the fall zone. So we need to pay attention to that part of our comprehensive plan, if anything goes further with this possible application.
Supposedly, all ordinances in any municipality are supposed to use our, a comprehensive plan of that municipality as the founding document to write the ordinance. And it's showing the shortfalls, the current shortfalls of our founding document. So if we write an ordinance that refers to a comprehensive plan that doesn't refer to scenic or designate scenic areas, and I haven't read the whole document, I was cherry picking, are we not chasing our tail to no avail?
Well.
Dennis, I would ask for your comment on that one.
Yeah, um, I, you're, it's, it's very easy to get ahead of ourselves, and that's what we're doing. Uh, we, once again, it goes back, you need to sit down with a piece of paper. What is it we want to accomplish here? Is it just cellphone towers? Is it all kinds of towers?
I think we just did.
Okay, but, but, and then list this, list these things very basically as an outline on a piece of paper. And when you've got down what you, what, what you're trying to do, what you wanna protect, et cetera, it's all there, and you connect the dots, and you have your statement. Until you, until you know exactly what you want to do, then you can go to the comprehensive plan, see what you need to change or adapt. You see what I mean? I would, I wouldn't waste time thinking about that right now. What I would do is put an outline together, starting, you, use, use the existing ordinance you're looking at, what you're doing as a reference. But we're doing this for ourself, and I wouldn't start off with something someone else has already done. What do we want? Uh, what do we want to protect? And once you start writing this down, it's gonna be very simple, and it'll come together pretty quick, but don't diverge. Once you've got that, then we can, we can take it piece by piece. And this can't, this isn't gonna happen immediately. But as Philippe said, very good point, you wanna get something out there right now to stop someone from coming in and putting up a three-hundred-foot tower like they did on Swan's Island. So, maybe passing, but that's gonna be up to you folks. Um, but then the other, the other thing I just, uh, wanted to, uh, mention here, we're coming up on, on the time limit here. Um, and I do wanna get this split district thing to you so you can see what I, what I put down. It all come, kinda goes along the same lines, not being specific, so you don't know exactly where a certain resource is and what it is, which you can find it on a state map. Um, but so, you know, this, if we can progress to that here eventually, that would be good. But, uh, once again, alls I can say is we have to know exactly what it is we want before we start, you know, branching out and looking at other things. It's like, okay, I got my shopping list, this is what I want. This is what I'm gonna go look for.
I actually think we just made our shopping list, so I'm gonna ask the counter question. Does this, do these sentences we just went through not address what we want to address? Is there something missing in the, this list of items? Is there something we don't like that doesn't fit? If we're gonna make it short and sweet, the purpose is to protect the scenic and visual character of the community, we can, uh, we have all those other statements. Is there something that this would not be a good mission statement? Is there a reason we can't use it and call this purpose and mission statement?
I think that this sums up our concerns, um, at, very well. And, and we could, uh, start with a blank piece of paper and be hard-pressed to get as complete and clear, uh, a statement of what we wanted, what we, what we hope to achieve by this. Well, I, I, if, if, if you're looking for a, a motion to accept this as, um, our, our mission statement, um, I would be willing to do that. I'm not motioning it now, but I'm suggesting that it's a possibl- possibility.
Well, short of remove, changing the word encourage to require, which I think we don't bill really need to do because I do think the application process designates it as a requirement.
Okay, yeah.
And so, there was really nothing that we changed in this entire section three. If I'm not mistaken, we accepted every sentence. Does it leave anything out? And this is a good point, and I know we're starting to wrap up here. This document doesn't really say no in the shoreline. I personally would like to say, no shoreline, end of story. I don't know how you guys feel about that.
How you like your internet, internet? Uh, you wouldn't have Axiom if you didn't allow it in the shoreline zone.
Um.
Yeah, true.
So this, this is, oh, okay. I, I keep thinking of it in terms of tall towers. Are there, is there a tall tower in the shoreline zone?
Yeah, there's a hundred-foot tower in the shoreline zone.
On Great Cranberry.
Right. I guess it's not a hundred feet though, is it?
Uh, it can't be, it's just taller than the boathouse.
Yeah. So perhaps that would not even come under our jurisdiction here, since it's so short.
Well, that's the thing, is that we would need to define that. We would need to define what is the height that we want to regulate? Because this says, if we're, if we're regulating wireless telecommunications and facilities, those could be ten feet tall, rather than.
I think we definitely should keep that, uh, as part of our definition. I, I think we should have more specifics as the towers get taller, but I definitely think we should be able to control any telecommunications facilities.
I agree.
Okay, um.
I think, you know, that, that the, um, the, the little tower on, uh, the boat shop over there, they, that did come before the planning board, as it is in the shoreline zone.
Um, because, yes. The shoreline zone has some height restrictions, does it not?
Yep, and, and this did not en- encroach on the height restrictions.
So.
So, so staying with this, I think this should be our mission statement.
Yes, my question to you was, should we say no cell towers in the shoreline zone, period? And Philippe's response was, if we had done that, then we wouldn't have Axiom. And, uh, now I'm coming to understand that's not true because the shoreline zone did review Axiom's application, and it did not exceed the standards in our shoreline standards. So, it's actually not true that we wouldn't have had Axiom, if I'm not mistaken.
Uh, no, because you're proposing having no telecommunications in the shoreline zone.
Well, we can't go, uh, this document isn't gonna be retroactive, it's only gonna be for future things.
Yeah, I know, but if it were to happen again, anyway.
Right, so I guess I, I, I think what we wanna do is discourage it, but I don't think we wanna say no. But I think that we, this document seems to kind of make it so people have to prove why they would have to do that, basically. So, we're discouraging you from the shoreline, you have to prove why you can't put it somewhere else, basically.
And, and it has to, uh, comply with the restrictions of the shoreline zone. In other words, not be over forty feet. So, right?
I just want you guys to envision for a second a cell tower on the green knubble between Baker's Island and Little Cranberry. And I, maybe for a myriad of reasons, that would never happen, but talk about a huge, I, I mean, uh, uh, that would not be good. Uh, Dennis.
The whole knubble is in the shoreline zone, isn't it? So it couldn't, it couldn't be over, uh, forty feet to start with.
Yeah. Dennis.
The, the shoreline zoning ordinance thus, does cover towers. Um, I think they may be exempted from height restriction, I'd have to take a look at it. Um, but if you do decide you are not going to allow towers in the shoreline zone, period, then you would modify the shoreline zone audi- um, ordinance, and you just put no in all the categories. So you, you'd, you'd modify the shoreline zoning ordinance for that. I think I leave the option open, though.
Okay.
I mean, you know, I mean, we, you still have a review process.
I think, uh, just like the checklist in our shoreline zone, that we should look at the last sentence of that, um, uh, that mission statement and have the protective scenic and visual character of the community as something that we, as the planning board, could vote on. So it's not a complete restriction, but it has to pass our, um, approval. So we could restrict a tower from being in a particular spot based on that.
Okay. Um, we need to wrap up. It seems to me like we've, uh, we concur with Owl's Head's mission statement. We don't really feel the need to depart from it in any way, shape, or form. We liked all their sentences. But I, I haven't heard anyone say they'd like to add anything to that. We're not gonna vote on this, at this meeting because I did say we weren't gonna vote at this meeting on a document. But I think we can generally conclude that we're accepting this as our mission. Um, so I would like to set up another meeting, um, sh- as short as possible, and please, let's just go through this, um, tooth and nail, and arrive at the meeting with any changes that you think that should happen so that we are prepared to hand something to the selectmen, to have them do their legal review, and, um, prepare it, or look it over, or whatever happens as the next step. Ben, do you see any problem with what I've just said?
No, that's fine. I just wanna check with the board and make sure that, uh, a Thursday, ten AM type of meeting, does that seem to generally work for everyone? I, I, I think we should try to get in the habit of, of being consistent so that everybody has some idea of being able to arrange their schedules.
Uh, it's, it's, it's fine with me.
It works next week for me.
For us, it's good.
Becca?
You want it one week, in one week or two weeks?
If you can do it. If you can do it in one week, uh, then, you know, we're here for an hour. We didn't accomplish a lot, but I think we kinda nailed down the, our direction. We talked through some issues. So if you can set one up in one week, um, within the parameters of being legal, I would like to do that. Cause I really, really, and, and you guys confirm with me, I'd like to have a document to hand to the selectmen for the next meet. Their next selectmen's meeting.
Yep.
Yes.
If uh, Caitlin here, can I say something?
Absolutely, go ahead Caitlin.
Uh, Axiom is planning some uh, internet maintenance on the eighteenth. So we may have some outages on Islesford specifically.
Is that next Thursday?
Yes.
Okay, alright.
How about, how about Wednesday?
I'm good with Wednesday. Is that enough time legally, Ben?
Wednesday, Wednesday is too short. I can do Friday, but Wednesday would, would, would be too short.
Okay, Friday.
Uh, Caitlin, do you, is Friday gonna work?
Yeah, I can host on Friday.
Okay, excellent.
Thank you Caitlin, that's great.
Excellent. Alright, so we're gonna plan on meeting next Friday. Please take an hour, put your laptop uh, on your lap. And read through the document and say, I don't like it, or I like it, and come prepared. Cause we're gonna, I really wanna whiz through this document fairly quickly uh, next week. Um, and I know that Dennis has, is gonna send out some material regarding that hundred foot. Uh, regarding the resource protection overlap, um, that sort of thing. Dennis, before we go, go ahead.
This will take two minutes. Here's uh, basically when you go to your uh, shoreline zoning board. And then to look at the, the districts are defined. Uh, I've added a section H. It did stop at G. I've added section H. That's what it says. H, split districts. Split districts contain more than one district in the same shoreline zoning location. Is shown on the shoreline zoning map. The resource protection district portion of split districts includes areas within other districts that fit the criteria of thirteen A above. That's resource protection district. Or places otherwise protected by mandatory shoreline zoning, National Resource Protection Act, or other laws. These areas may include, but are not limited to significant wildlife habitats. That require buffer zones of various measurement, depending on the particular habitat classification. Maine Department of Environmental Protection, inland fisheries and wildlife, and other agencies regulate activities within these buffer zones. That's what that, that's what that little strip is. That, that is a flag for me and the planning board when we see that um, in an area that's gonna uh, get a permit. That we, we know something is there and I go to either the wild, the habitat maps, or the historical maps, or the clam midden maps. And I find out what it is and what the buffer zone is. That's the EP have to rule on that.
So it clean. It cleans up the problems you have.
Yeah, it says what it is.
Okay.
Yeah, and I will, I, I'm gonna go ahead and I'm gonna email this to you again, so you can distribute it to the planning board and Ben will get a copy as well.
Okay, sounds good. Um, I move that uh, we adjourn this meeting. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Philippe, second. Um, and now uh, we need to verbally vote. Uh, we adjourn. Philippe, yes or no?
Yes.
Bill, yes or no?
Yes.
Becca, yes or no?
Yes.
Joanne, yes. Uh, see you all next Friday.
Thank you all. Great meeting, uh, Joanne.
Yeah.
You just turned, turned out to be good at this, so.
Alright, see you next week.
See you guys.